This is, well, what is typically our weekly meeting. We do have a hearing this morning with our community development organization and guests attending, of course, our commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. And I'm going to ask Director Callahan to please lead us in the pledge.
Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Quest?
Go right ahead.
To move the public hearing to be the first item on your, on your agenda.
The other items are short. I'm going to keep the agenda as it is.
It's your prerogative.
Bill, Leslie?
Yes.
Hold? Okay.
If it's quick, let's do it.
Yep.
All right. Okay, then. So polling for any potential conflicts of interest?
No.
Bill?
No.
Okay. I do want to indicate that I did have a conversation with Bev Twilman. It had absolutely nothing to do with the merits of the case. It dealt strictly with the timing, and that was it.
I could say the same thing. I mean, there was nothing, nothing relative to the case.
Leslie, none?
Nope.
Okay. All right, then. Okay, so moving on, the first item is signings, and this is an action item. It's MSF 22-0001, Hoodoo Valley North, Phase One. Vlad, take it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County. Pursuant to the Board's direction, staff has prepared an order of decision for your review and signing.
Okay.
Move that we execute the order of decision for MSF 22-0001, Hoodoo Valley North, Phase One.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Executing the order of decision.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Second item, CUP, which is a conditional use permit. 21-0010 Blackwell Booster Station, City of Coeur d'Alene, to establish a conditional use permit for public utility complex facility on 0.275 acre split zone parcel in the Ag suburban and restricted residential zones. Who's taking this one, Vlad? Go right ahead. And incidentally, I should indicate this is a deliberation. Go right ahead, Vlad.
Once again, Vlad Finkel, for the record, as you stated, this is a request by City of Coeur d'Alene Water Department for the approval of a conditional use permit to establish a public utility complex facility, which will consist of a booster station to replace an existing booster station that is in a dilapidated state and needs to be replaced urgently. The subject property is located just outside of the city limits of Coeur d'Alene, on the west side of Blackwell Island. The property, as you stated, is fairly small. It's only quarter of an acre in size, and it is on fairly steep slopes. In fact, I will have a number of photos further down in my presentation that shows that the property is almost like a cliff. It is currently split zoned restricted residential and agricultural suburban with a comp plan designation of border, and it is located within the City of Coeur d'Alene area of city impact. Going back to the zoning of this property, pursuant to Cooten County Land Use Code, we have a provision that allows for the Director to make a decision on a split zone property, which zoning classification they would like to utilize, or they would like to review it under at the request of the applicant to provide for less restrictive regulations. In this case, it would be the front yard setbacks for a booster station in the restricted residential zone. Along with this request, the applicant is requesting a variance to the front yard setback requirements of 25 feet. They would like to have the booster station at the eastern property line adjacent to the public right of way due to slope conditions. As you can see, based on the site plan that is before you, the improvements on site will consist of a 900 square foot building that will house the pumping station, as well as a standby generator as required per, I believe, state and federal regulations. Due to slope conditions, the applicant is not even proposing to have any improvements for the maintenance parking spot on site. They have had the discussion with the Highway District to park along the right of way, and based on the code requirements, or lack thereof, parking requirements for a public utility complex facility, staff did not recommend or require a parking spot on site. It can be along the public right of way. These are the photos that were taken at the project site by the applicant. Two of them, one on the left-hand side and one on the lower portion of your slide, is taken from the adjacent right of way, and the two remaining photos at the top are from the hillside. It's very steep. We're talking about slopes that exceed 35, probably 40 percent grade. We have requested the City of Coeur d'Alene Water Department official to provide us with some photos of similar facilities that are currently constructed within the city limits of Coeur d'Alene, or for that matter, in the county, and this is what the new facility would look like at this site. It's a fairly small building that would house all the mechanical equipment necessary for a water booster station. During the agency comment period, we solicited agency comments from the list that's before you. We received pretty much all of the comments were in support of this application. The only remaining review that needs to happen is the Department of Environmental Quality will review the construction plans and other aspects of this request at the time of development. They did submit just a general statement that they are on board, but they have not reviewed construction plans or the design drawings at this time. We don't have any concerns that that will occur at the time of building permit application. Therefore, we believe that the comments are appropriate. This request at, during the public comment period, received absolutely no public comments. Staff believes that this recommendation, or this request should be approved, and the applicant should comply with the agency requirements. The hearing was held on March 3rd of this year, and I believe there was no public at the hearing, and the hearing examiner subsequently submitted a recommendation of approval. That concludes my presentation, and we hereby request that you approve a conditional use permit, along with a variance to the front yard setback. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Vlad? Okay, so this is a deliberation, which means it's strictly amongst three of us. I guess then I'll ask for motion.
Well, you want to deliberate? I mean, I'm good with the project.
Yeah.
It's my deliberation.
That's why I asked. Okay.
Yeah.
Fine. Okay, let's go.
All right. I move that we approve CUP 21-0010, which is the Blackwell Booster Station for the City of Coeur d'Alene.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Conditional use permit 21-0010 is hereby approved. Okay, thank you, Vlad. Okay, then, moving on to the public hearing segment of our meeting.
We did skip one.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to point out also, also going to point out that you skipped item 7A, Lone Mountain Estates, 7th, Phase 2.
Yeah. The first item on deliberations.
Oh, Lone Mountain?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, I went right from Hoodoo Valley North.
Yeah.
Apologize. Okay, so we have one more deliberation, which is MSF Major Subdivision 22-0002, Lone Mountain Estates, 7th Edition, Phase 2. It's the final subdivision approval of Lone Mountain Estates, consisting of 16 residential lots on 94 acres of a preliminarily approved 41 lot residential subdivision in case number MSP 19-0008 on approximately 247 acres in rural zone. Go right ahead, Vlad.
Commissioners, I'll be very brief. The purpose of today's deliberations on this matter is to review, assess, and confirm that the preliminary conditions of approval set forth in the preliminary order of decision in case number MSP 19-0008 for Lone Mountain Estates, 6th and 7th Edition, have been met or will be met through appropriate measures such as bonding with either the county or agencies with jurisdiction. The subject property is located on the north side of Cooten County, just north of Chulka Road and east of Ramsey Road. As you can see, the preliminary plat consisted of 41 residential lots on 47 acres, and on January 23rd, 2020, the Board approved this preliminary plat, consisting of two Phases 6th and 7th Edition. Phase 1, final plat, which is 6th Edition, consisting of 25 residential lots on 153.63 acres, was reviewed and approved by staff and the Board on July 15th, 2021. This final request for Phase 2, 7th Edition, consists of 16 residential lots on 94 acres. Staff has reviewed all of the conditions of approval and have determined that the applicant has provided sufficient evidence provided by agencies with jurisdiction that they can and will be able to meet those preliminary conditions of approval. None of the infrastructure improvements are in place. I have conducted a site visit. The applicant is currently working on site. They're clearing the area that will be improved to provide access to the subject property. The applicant has submitted a completion bond for the road improvements to Lakes Highway District. In addition to that, they have submitted a separate completion bond to the county for the common driveway improvements that will be under the jurisdiction of Cooten County, because the Highway District will not take it into its maintenance district. Furthermore, we had taken a large completion bond for the water improvements associated with this project. All of the lots will connect to Lone Mountain Estates' water system, and we have a bond of 150 percent of the estimated value of improvements by a design professional, which is, I believe, $435,000 worth of, $290,000 worth of improvements at a rate of 150 percent, which adds up to 435,000. The county has that bond in hand, and it will be released upon completion of those improvements and verification by a design professional. I don't have anything else to add at this point other than that, we recommend that you approve this request in order for the applicant to record this phase of the project.
That it? Any questions for Vlad? We're in deliberations. Nothing?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so this is really just a continuation and an approval. Okay, motion, please.
I move that we approve MSF 22-0002, which is Lone Mountain Estates, 7th Edition, Phase 2.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. MSF 22-002 is hereby approved. Thank you, Vlad. Okay, now we can move on to the public hearing segment of our meeting this morning, and this is an action item, which means it should conclude with a vote. And we are talking about PUD, that's PUD 21-003, Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club Plan Unit Development. It's a request by Discovery, Coeur d'Alene Investors LLC, for approval of an amendment to the existing PUD with the following considerations, and I'm not going to go through all of them at this point. I think, who's handling this? Vlad, are you handling? Okay, so Vlad can go through that for us. Okay, a couple of items regarding rules of play. The appellant, or excuse me, the property owner of the appellant will be given 10 minutes. We're going to strictly enforce this. Comments pursuant are going to be limited to three minutes. If anybody wants to speak for a group, that individual can have 15 minutes, but 10 people need to forfeit their time. Other than that, it's a three-minute max. Okay, so without any further ado, Vlad, would you take us off, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. Before I get into the specifics of this request, I would like to provide some clarification to the public as well as the Board as to the reasons why we are here before you today.
Sure.
Pursuant to Cooten County Land Use Development Code Title 8, Section 8, 3, 313, Extensions and Amendments, subsection B amendments, there are two different provisions that give staff direction for review of any amendments to an existing PUD.
Okay.
Subsection B amendments, item 1, states, "Minor amendments to a PUD, its structures or uses may be approved by the Director." Minor amendments include, without limitation, adjustments to platted lot lines or a combination of the boundary lines of platted and legally-created unplatted parcels. The determination of whether a proposed amendment to a PUD constitutes a minor amendment shall be within the sound discretion of the Director." So that's the first provision that allows for minor modifications that are administratively approved. The second section of this title of amendments to a PUD states, "Significant changes in use, structures, lot or boundary lines, conditions of approval, and all other aspects of a final PUD plan must be approved by the Board in accordance with the application, hearing, and approval procedures for a new PUD." Having said that, I'd like to explain why staff has concluded that this amendment that's before you today is a significant change. There have been at least two other minor modifications to this PUD that I will go over as I get into my presentation. The most recent one that's before you today consists of 28 acres, which is roughly 4 percent of the 662 acres that were approved for this PUD back in 2005. While the 4 percent of the total change that's being proposed may seem insignificant, we believe that an inclusion of 28 acres gives us some pause and concern that we shouldn't make that decision on our end through an administrative decision, that it should truly be reviewed by the hearing examiner as well as the Board, and therefore, we believe that that is a significant change. Now, having set the stage, I will get into the specifics of this request. If the Board has any questions at this point with regards to how the decision was made, I can go over that at this time.
Anything?
No.
Okay, keep going.
So with this request, everybody knows that Gaza PUD is located on the east side of Coeur d'Alene Lake with access off of Gaza Day Road, which connects to Highway 97. So this project consists of two requests to modify the existing PUD. The first one is to consolidate an existing residential lot with an open space lot that has a golf course for purposes of providing a clubhouse facility for spa and med purposes. The second aspect of this proposal is to add a total of 28 acres, including one parcel on the west side of the PUD and two additional parcels on the east side of PUD. Now, I'd like to go over some of the facts as it relates to this project. The original approval consists of 662 acres, as I already stated. In 2018 and in 2020, there were two minor modifications to this PUD, one in this location and one further south in this location. Commissioner Brooks, in this area, I don't know if you noticed. The sum of those two changes was approximately two acres. The area that's shown in red on the west side and the east side of the PUD, and the existing boundary of the PUD is, of course, light purple, is what's, is the request today. These parcels are all located in the restricted residential zone, and the western parcel is located in the shoreline comp plan designation, and the two remaining parcels on the east side are in the country designation. Now, I'd like to reiterate that staff did not get into the specifics of comp plan review, because we believe that the assessment of comp plan goals and policies and parameters or sideboards of the original PUD were dealt with at the original approval in 2005. Because at this time, the applicant is not requesting any additional density outside of what was approved, which included 375 units, we furthermore don't believe that comp plan analysis needs to be reviewed at this time. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from the list that's before you. The only main, I think the only comment that's worth significant review and further analysis is perhaps the response from North Cooten Water and Sewer District. The North Cooten, the North Cooten Water and Sewer District had stated that they're not opposed to this amendment, as long as there is no density increase. But they did state that they have currently a moratorium on issuance of any additional connections. I don't know when the moratorium will end, but I do know that the applicant, while they currently have an approval of 375 units, they have only exercised 335, and perhaps even less than that, because there have been a number of LCA's lot consolidations, which have decreased the total number of units that have been exercised at this time. More or less, they have 40 units that are still available. Therefore, they have stated that if this property is included as part of the overall PUD geographical area, that the only additional density that they, or the only density that they could exercise on those three parcels, if they were to subdivide them, is what's remaining available, which is 40 density, or 40 EDU rights. The other agencies really didn't have any position on this. ITD, Highway District, Fire District, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Department of Lens, no one else really seemed to have an issue with this. During the first agency, or sorry, during the first public comment period, we received a total of 11 comments in support, 12 in opposition. The public concerns were raised with regard to potential increase in density, which is not the case, and I clearly state that in staff analysis, and so does the hearing examiner. The other issues are dilapidated road conditions in the area, increasing traffic, noise, provisions of water and sewer service concerns, strain on limited rural infrastructure, and impacts to wildlife. I understand the public's position, but I am frankly a bit confused as to why those comments are being raised, because, as I have stated, and I will reiterate this again, no additional density is being proposed. I would also like to add that aside from this process, if the applicant did not pursue a PUD amendment, they still would have the right to take the parcels that they currently have and go through a subdivision process. If they chose to go through a minor subdivision process, it would be reviewed by Director Callahan through an administrative process. If it were to be proposed through a major subdivision process, then of course, it would go in front of the hearing examiner as well as the Board. So the increase in density could go with either a PUD and a subsequent subdivision, if it was to exceed 40 units within the remaining allowed uses or densities within the PUD or outside of it. That could happen. They could pull this request and pursue a subdivision to increase the density as some of the concerns that were raised by the public. During the agency comment period, sorry, during the hearing examiner's hearing, I don't believe we had any members of the public, there were no one to testify on this matter, and subsequent to that, the hearing examiner recommended approval of this request. Following the hearing examiner's recommendation, we received a request for a public hearing, and with that, the Board granted it, and we moved on to a second public comment period. We received additional eight comments in support and 19 comments in opposition. Staff believes that the addition of three additional parcels consisting of a total of 28 acres, an increase of 4 percent of the existing approved area, is a minor change. We believe that this request should be approved with the conditions proposed by staff and the hearing examiner, and we support this approval. I'd like to add, before I end my conversation, I had numerous conversations with folks who are opposed to this request, and I have tried to explain to them the applicant's request. I don't, I'm not sure whether or not that it was fully understood, but I hope that those questions can be addressed today. One point of clarification I'd like to make, we had a member of the public bring it to my attention last week, a week before the hearing, that the applicant has gone through a boundary line adjustment on two of the, two of the three parcels in this area, which significantly modified the overall parcel area. It didn't modify the requested area for an amendment, but it modified the geographical area of those two parcels. It was pointed out to me that the newly adjusted parcel legal description It was pointed out to me that the newly adjusted parcel, um, legal descriptions were not in concert with the descriptions that were published in local press, as well as sent out to the public. I immediately contacted the applicant, and I had explained to them that while the area that's subject of this proposal, 28 acres, or at least 18 acres on the east side, has not changed, because it would include a portion of the property that was adjusted, that is currently within the PUD, that we would request to clarify this, perhaps, issue. They record a new deed to put back the boundary to its original, um, area as it was proposed with the, um, amendment. I have the deed that was recorded last Friday, I can share it with the board, it's also attached to the project file, that these parcels were put back into their original, uh, legal descriptions. I can pass it to the Chair of the Board at this time.
B 1001.
Okay, thank you.
I stand for any questions that you have at this time, Commissioners.
Any questions for Vlad?
Go right ahead.
I would ask, does the, uh, horrid, horrid condition of 97 have any impact on this at all?
Can you repeat your question?
The condition of Route 97. The condition of Route 97, which is just horrible, uh, it's sloughing off, falling apart, there are places where it's very narrow because of the slough off here and the falling into the lake.
I understand your question, Commissioner Brooks. I'd like to clarify that while the, um, the condition of State Highway 97 may not be in its best shape, this request, as I stated, is to modify the overall boundary of the PUD. It's not to increase the density. They still have 40 units that are available that have not been exercised, which they could disperse onto this area, and essentially, you could say, they would have the same density over a greater area, they would have actually lesser, um, density ratio. Instead of 662 acres, it would be over 692 acres. Because they're not requesting additional density, they're not requesting additional, or they're not proposing additional traffic in and out of the PUD, and therefore, the Highway District and ITD did not have any additional comments at this time.
Thank you. Okay, so basically, we're not increasing density, but we're adding 28 acres?
Yep.
Okay. Um, do you want to elaborate just very briefly as to why you don't think it's going to add traffic?
Because this is, Chairman Philios, this is not a subdivision.
Go ahead.
This is a PUD amendment. A PUD amendment, in this case, is to increase the overall boundary. It's to basically state that we're going instead of from point A, B, C, and D to close a certain boundary, as surveys would say, we're going to six points, eight points. We're increasing the geographical area of a certain approved project. It doesn't state that they are increasing from 375 units now, because they have more land, to 400 units or 450 units. They're keeping the same density, it's just over a larger area, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but it, but, but maintaining the density doesn't mean that there isn't an increase in units.
I'm not following.
Chairman, I think I can help.
Go ahead.
David Callahan, Community Development Director. PUDs are an unusual animal.
Go ahead.
You may or may not grant additional density when it's requested.
When it's requested.
It's not being requested now.
That is correct.
If there was more density proposed, it would come through another PUD amendment.
Right, so I guess the bottom line of what you just said is that the request for additional units is not what's before us today.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Appreciate that.
The easy takeaway from today's hearing is there cannot be any additional units added over what already is approved.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Vlad? I guess not. Thanks, Vlad, appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to start the timer, we're going to turn it over to the appellant, and this is Stephanie, right?
Yes, it is. Good morning. I'll let that Vlad pull up the.
Applicant, what did I say, appellant? I apologize, applicant, okay.
It's okay.
We had an appeal too long ago. Okay, ready? You've got 10 minutes.
Okay, I'm going to let Vlad pull up the PowerPoint. Again, my name is Stephanie Blalack, I'm a landes planner for Verdis. I'm here representing Discovery Coeur d'Alene Investors. Our address is 3906 North Schreiber Way in Coeur d'Alene. I'm also here with Rob Corret and Matt Adelson, who are both with Discovery to answer any questions you may have. I would like to start my presentation with a brief history of Gaza Ranch, even though Vlad did a great job, I'd just like to reiterate a few things. The Gaza Ranch PUD was approved in 2005, with that approval was 375 dwelling units on the 662 acres of land. Also approved was the clubhouse, golf course, restaurant, fitness center, and spa. To date, Gaza Ranch has 335 dwelling units that have been accounted for, which leaves 40 units that have not been allocated to a lot or project at this time, but can be used in the future. There have been two minor PUD amendments granted by the director. Those two amendments added approximately two acres to the Gaza Ranch with no increase in dwelling units. The three parcels requesting to be added into Gaza Ranch have been owned by Discovery for 15 years. Again, there are two main requests included in this PUD amendment. The first is to incorporate three parcels into the Gaza Ranch PUD. The three parcels are intended to be used by the members, therefore, they should be included in the development. A total of 28 acres will be added. The 7.9 acre lot on the west side of Gaza will be used as a recreational lot only, no residences are proposed on this parcel. Uses may include, but are not limited to, a zip line course, hiking trails, snow tubing, paintball, restrooms, and other structures associated with those recreational uses. The two lots, 10 acres each, on the east side of Gaza will be developed residentially using the already approved, unallocated PUD dwelling units. It's important to point out that the three lots can be subdivided and developed on their own without being incorporated in the planned unit development. If developed outside of the Gaza PUD, the developer would not be required to use those approved, unallocated 40 dwelling units. This means if the three restricted residential lots were developed at their maximum density today, right now, that would add 142 homes on this 28 acres. We are not asking for that. The PUD amendment that we're asking for is decreasing the density by asking to expand the boundary lines of Gaza Ranch to include the 28 acres and utilize a portion of their 40 PUD dwelling units for future projects. The reason, again, for the amendment is to bring these parcels into the PUD so it's a cohesive project with defined boundaries. Discovery would like their contiguous parcels to be incorporated into their development. The second request is to move the spa and medical facility from the approved clubhouse location to Lot C 15, which is highlighted in blue, and then combine C 15 with a clubhouse facility. Lot C 15 is just a better fit and location for the spa building. The spa was approved with the 2005 Gaza Ranch PUD. This is simply a location change. The location change is 250 feet to the north, that's it. Traffic. The approved 2005 Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club planned unit development has already accounted for and addressed the traffic for the approved 375 residential dwelling units. Again, no additional dwelling units are proposed. There was no opposition from agencies. When development occurs within the PUD, the agencies have their standard requirements to meet, and we work closely with those agencies on a continual basis. We will meet their requirements. The proposal meets both the country and the shoreline comprehensive plan designations by incorporating more land. There will be more open space added to the Gaza Ranch PUD, and recreational uses will be added. Staff determined the PUD amendment complies with the requirements of a PUD application and recommended approval. I think it's important to point out, Mrs. Woodard, her analysis, she says, "The applicant appears to have provided sufficient information to determine compliance and/or the ability to comply with the applicable ordinances and agency requirements of a PUD. The three lots being proposed for inclusion in the PUD are contiguous and natural additions to the current PUD boundaries and will not increase the density allowances already in place. If they are not included in the PUD, they could be developed independently, resulting the potential for an increase in residential density that would be far less desirable for this area." In conclusion, this amendment request of the Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club would not increase the approved density units of the PUD, but it does provide additional acreage for the home sites, it would increase the PUD open space, and then expands the recreational acreage for its members. The PUD boundary expansion and relocation of the spa is consistent with the intent and purpose of the Cootney County Code and Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding homes, businesses, and neighborhoods, and with the natural characteristics of the area. The hearing examiner and staff have both recommended approval. That does conclude my presentation. We thank you for considering the requests, and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephanie?
Thank you.
Okay. So, you're speaking in their behalf. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on with the comments, I guess we'll try to mix them up?
Okay.
If we can.
Actually, we have one in favor does not wish to speak, so now we're just.
Okay.
Opposed.
Okay. Deborah Stone wishes to speak, opposed.
Thank you. Deborah Stone, 5321 South Freedom Lane, Harrison, although I'm in the unincorporated county part of Cootney County. Commissioners, when deciding the applicant's request for a significant change, which it's been acknowledged that it is, in the boundary lines of this PUD, please consider the following objectives of Cootney County, uh, February 2020 Comprehensive Plan update. The plan update objectives include the fostering of rural and community character by encouraging open spaces, low-density development, uses that serve local residents and harmonize with the community, as well as the conservation of land characteristics and soil integrity, protection of water quality and quantity, and the protection enhancement of wildlife habitat. The request for additional acreage in the Gaza PUD does not accomplish the aforementioned objectives, because it is subject to have additional units placed at another time. Please also consider the purposes set forth in the Cootney County Land Use and Development Code, which include, but are not limited to, the protection and promotion of property rights, while also ensuring that the use of property does not unduly interfere with the lawful use and enjoyment of other properties, as well as carrying out the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan by providing standards for the orderly growth and development of Cootney County, and avoiding undue concentration of population and overcrowding of land, and ensuring development, that development mitigates negative environmental, social, and economic impacts, and aids in the establishment of a transfer, transportation system that is safe, efficient, and minimizes congestion, and the protection of property against significant adverse effects from soil erosion and storm runoff. The request for additional acreage to the Gaza PUD does not accomplish the aforementioned purposes. I know Vlad talked about the, um, the boundary lines for these lots. I also note that identification of the applicant's additional requested acreage is at best confusing, given the available parcel maps from the assessor's office. I've been told the assessor's office does not always have accurate acreage data. I have exhibits to present with the caveat that the lot lines in near or around Gaza Ranch may fluctuate at a moment's notice.
Thank you.
B 1003. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Betsy, just provide a 30-second warning for folks.
Sure, there's 29 seconds right there.
There's 29, see?
Oh, okay. Next, we have Carlene Kada, also opposed, wishes to speak.
Carlene Kada, 20621 South Highway 97, Harrison, Idaho. Thank you, B O C C, for this hearing to consider Gaza Ranch's latest request. I would like to read part of a letter from a neighbor, Barbara Wordsworth, who lives at 9261 Gaza Road for the past 35 years. Barb chose not to speak herself because she wants her, but she wants her thoughts placed in the record. Please take into consideration the noise factor on Gaza Road caused by continual construction traffic. There can be 50 to 60 dump trucks and various other large trucks every day, Monday through Friday. The noise outdoors and inside my house is beyond comprehension. The noise is so bad outdoors, I can't hear the birds chirping or talk to someone in my yard. Each working day from about 6:30 a.m. until at least 5:00 p.m., the noise goes on and on and on. It never stops. Gaza Road is inundated with trash and cigarettes that have been tossed. The cigarette problem I have brought to the attention of the east side Fire District. I can imagine one of those cigarettes being flipped out the window while it's still hot. Is that something we want to deal with higher? I myself live along Highway 97, very close to the Gaza Ranch main entrance. Daily, I see many construction vehicles rumbling around Highway 97 headed to Gaza with full loads of dirt, rock, gravel, and cement, along with workers in their vehicles, all needed to help to keep building more and more in a development that should never have been located in our rural community in the first place. It's like a small, private city. Construction traffic, trash, has been mentioned, but who picks up the trash? It is the locals who take pride in their community and work hard to maintain it. All summer long between Gaza Road and Arrow Point, which is largely private now, ATVs and UTVs with music blaring zoom down the highway. Is this legal? Our once quiet and peaceful community has been turned upside down with the noise, traffic, trash, the destruction of our infrastructure, the loss of wildlife, and the excessive water use due to this misplaced development. It's here and we can't make it go away, but we who live here full-time can bet the decision-makers we put in office to stop this invasion into our rural lands. No more expansion, no matter how big or small it appears on paper. It is no secret Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club plan to continue to try and grow more and more until much of the east side of the lake is closed to locals, made private for part-timers, and is turned into one massive playground for the wealthy. This area is our full-time home. 750 residents live in this area all year round. It is a rural community desperately trying to maintain a life we cherish. Please deny this request for a PUD expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, um...
Is it Sue Ann?
Is it Sue Ann Harns? Okay. Come forward.
Thanks to the B O C C for granting this hearing. It's important that citizens are heard. Sue Ann Harns, excuse me, Sue Ann Harns, 31783 South Highway 97. I would like to read a letter by Sue Hamer, per her request. She owns property at 22176 South Highway 97. She is elderly and has owned this property for many years, and wanted her issues brought to the light to this hearing. Quote, "I feel Gaza Ranch is getting way too big. When they blasted down three feet to put in their golf course, they disturbed the water table so much that I had to put in a culvert pipe to keep the water from flooding my property. The runoff of their fertilizers made green algae in the bay my property is on, Echo Bay. Those who oversee Gaza Ranch feel they can do anything," unquote. Later in conversation, Miss Hamer stated she ended up suing Gaza Ranch, Scott Reed being her attorney. She had to go to a lot of trouble and expense, including the placement of pipes under Highway 97 to protect her own property from being washed into Echo Bay. These were problems that did not exist prior to the Gaza Ranch being put in. Miss Hamer's issues are not unique. Numerous other neighbors have had similar problems due to the Gaza Ranch development being allowed. Streams that once supplied water to homes being diverted or dried up due to the movement of dirt for this development. Runoff that continually washes dirt and fertilizers across neighboring property and into Lake Coeur d'Alene. These are just but a few of the reasons to deny this request for a major amendment to this PUD. Gaza Ranch and Lake Club is a major development that is destroying rural land in an area that is not equipped to handle such a massive amount of construction. It should not be allowed to grow any bigger by any amount of expansion."
Thank you. Okay, Bev Twoman?
Thank you for granting this hearing, that, we really appreciate you guys doing that. I live at 15143 South Esbury Road, Harrison. On a recent Wednesday, I was driving home and turned into Highway 97. It was 3:45 p.m. From the intersection of I-90 and Highway 97 to the intersection of Burma and Gauzer Road, I passed 94 vehicles in 10 minutes. Once I passed Gauzer Road and headed south, only five more vehicles passed me before I turned into my driveway, 15 minutes. It is evident this massive amount of traffic on the very fragile road connecting the east side was mainly coming from construction crews at the Gauzer Ranch, a totally misplaced project smack dab in the middle of our rural community. When commenting to ITD about this concern, we citizens have been told more than once, and I quote, "Excessive traffic isn't their problem. If our decision-makers wouldn't allow so much growth in this area, those problems wouldn't exist," unquote. So here we are again before the decision-makers. 18 years ago, this proposal came before the B.O.C.C. that would forever change the major portion of Cootney County known as the east side of the lake. Those limited number of full-time persons then living in the area opposed with a passion this out-of-place development that would forever change 662 acres of pristine ranch land, home to many wildlife, to place an 18-hole golf course with 375 dwellings in a rural community with one curvy, twisty road as access to this recreation area of second and third homes, sickened anyone familiar with the value and beauty of rural Idaho living. This did not belong in rural North Idaho, but since big money wanted this private playground for the rich, and opposition was ignored, the PUD was approved. Locals were shoved aside while the public lost a local restaurant, a local public marina, and have almost, at this point, lost the use of our public road, Gauzer Road. It's turned into a one-lane road with illegal construction traffic parked all along the side of it. Nobody does anything. Nothing positive have come to the full-time residents in the Highway 97 corridor from this private development, but a lot of problems have surfaced, and they continue to escalate. Their dwellings are not like the average home, mansions that are 10,000, 11,000, 12,000 square feet with numerous water features and swimming pools. It's a nightmare for many. We witnessed damage done to wildlife corridors. We witnessed mud going across Highway 97. This particular expansion may not have additional dwellings, but it's putting more growth, more disruption to wildlife right closer to Highway 97, and all the issues that follow, and the trash. So the decision is to please be responsible to the people who live there full-time, the people who elect you, the people who pay your salaries, the people who care about North Idaho, pick up the trash, the people who go out and service sub-Gauzer people with EMTs and firefighters. We never get anything back in return except a closed door. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Jack Cunningham? Opposed, wishes to speak. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. My name is Jack Cunningham. I live at 4693 North Shaw Loop Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I've been a resident for 27 years. Hunter, fisherman, been using the lake all that time. I'm a concerned citizen who has fished and hunted on Coeur d'Alene Lake for 27 years. I've seen many changes in our shorelines, number of docks, waterfront-fertilized lawns, and water clarity issues, which, by the way, Lake Tahoe is going through the same issue now that they're having to deal with. Lake Tahoe's losing one foot of clarity per year in the last 27 years. I'd say we've lost half of that out fishing, looking at lures, depths, fish coming up. There's been a significant change in the water clarity through the years. I'm still concerned about, oh, yeah, I'm still concerned about the commercial dock building that's going on or has been proposed for Wolf Lodge Bay. I know it has nothing to do with this, but while I've got you here, thought I'd let you know that that's a problem and a concern. Today, we're talking about the expansion of Gauzer Ranch, 28 acres of manicured landscaped property. And with that comes the use of fertilizers and additional water from the lake. The ranch is currently using 1.3 million gallons of water per day, or up to 1.3 million gallons of water today. I understand that it's not being metered, so we don't really know, but I'm not positive on that, but that's a concern. But let's step back. 1.3 million gallons of water are coming out of the lake every day for Gauzer Ranch. Now, that's not so much of a concern to me. Maybe for Washington and Oregon because we're taking water, but that's a legal issue I'm not involved with. My concern is 1.3 million gallons of water going back into the lake with everything that it's taking with it, primarily nitrates, phosphates from all of the landscaping, and that's feeding into the problem with algae, and the algae's building up, as I've indicated and others have indicated as well. Phosphates, nitrates, they feed a process called eutrophication, and this is a bigger issue that will cloud the water with algae and upset the normal oxygen and temperature levels of the lake. As an example, look at Fernin in August. Shallow-water lake, algae issues, same thing. You guys see it everywhere.
I'm going to give you another 60 seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. My biggest concern is a parallel process oxidizing the heavy metals that permeated the sediments throughout the lake. Superfund cleanup is dealing with that upstream from us, but the eutrophication process will release the heavy metals that are currently in our sediments. It's a natural process. If we continue to heat the lake up with these nitrates and phosphates and this eutrophication process continues, we'll have more and more heavy metals start to be released from the lake, at which point I'm sure the EPA and DEQ will get involved. So why expand by 28 acres of additional landscape that needs to be fertilized, additional water that's being used pumped back into the lake with everything that goes with it? That's the question you'll have to answer. But my opinion is no, enough, and that's got to expand throughout the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Janet Torline, opposed, wishes to speak.
Thanks again for listening to the public, and that's kind of one of the issues I'd like to address. Janet Torline, 1802 East Litton Lane, Harrison, Idaho. I live above Turner Bay. The Comprehensive Plan states subdivisions are designed to reduce the need of infrastructure, roads, water sewer over long distance, and be self-contained, and require very limited public services. That's not the case with this property. Gauzer Ranch Golf and Lake Club does not meet that criteria, nor the secondary purpose of the country designation is to promote economic activities that minimize environmental impacts and do not require full range of service. This development has a lot of environmental impacts. The access, as we've talked about, through Highway 97 and Burma Road, I've lived out there for 50 years. I knew Pete and John Gauzer. They did not play golf, is deteriorating drastically. There's going to be some serious wrecks on that road, not to mention what I call the Toolbox Derby, in and out every day, workers racing to and from. It's increased dramatically with all the construction over the last years. In fact, the site visit said a tremendous amount of residential construction activity was apparent throughout the properties. There's nothing public about Gauzer Ranch Golf and Lake Club. You can drive down the county road. You cannot stop. You cannot get out of your car. All of those recreation activities are not for the public. It's a playground, as has been stated before, an exclusive playground for the rich and famous. The public is not allowed off the road. There is nothing whatsoever about Gauzer Ranch that has caused, other than causing the public more stress and distress, clearly not in the best interest of the public. The water issues being drawn from the lake are a serious issue, as you say, as was mentioned, it's not metered. How much are they actually drawing? The pollutants that go back in. Obviously, North Cootney Water and Sewer District is concerned. They've had several sewage failures. They're not operating their service responsibly. It's affected water of nearby neighbors.
Excuse me, Janet.
I realize this won't...
Yeah, Janet, hold on a second. Jonathan, can you address that?
She just needs to nod.
Papers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's shuffling the papers, the mic's picking them up.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry. And the other concern is this bit-by-bit expansion. People are approached constantly about wanting, would you sell your property to Gauzer? Would you sell your property to Gauzer?
Give you another 60 seconds. Go.
So it's just a real issue for those of us who live out there year-round. I'm really concerned about the one road in, one road out. Suppose there's a wildfire. How are we going to manage that with hundreds, hundreds of heavy construction vehicles all racing to get out of the way? I oppose this and hope that this bit-by-bit expansion will not be allowed to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Jackie McNamara, opposed, wishes to speak.
Thank you for having this hearing. Jackie McNamara, 5223 South Catamaran, Harrison, Idaho. I'm opposed to this project because it is not beneficial to the public. In fact, it is highly detrimental. I have lived here since about 2001, 2002. When I moved here, I'm one of the private homes in this PUD. My utility bills were exactly $25. That included water sewage and road maintenance. I now have had levied on me because there aren't impact fees on the developer. I had, in 2007, I had to fork over $9,000 to Gauzer. Why was this? Because we were pushed off our well onto Gauzer water, where they were drawing it from the lake. A $9,000 check had to be issued to continue to run the water in my pipe. Last year, I was taxed again. Why? Because they want to expand the dwellings at this site. My dwelling and the dwellings that were here for over 20 years are average-sized dwellings. They're 2,500 square feet, 3,500 square feet. The dwellings at Gauzer are limited right now to 11,300 square feet. Why? Because the infrastructure, the water, is not available for water suppression beyond that. So what happens? Gauzer sold the water to North Cootney Water District after I paid my $9,000, and now it's being maintained by them, but ill-maintained. In order to allow Gauzer to have larger homes and even put water suppression on the 11,300 feet, they had to float another bond. For the next 20 years, we now pay at $129 a month just for sewage, $62 a month for water. My water is from Gauzer, sold to Arrow Point, sold back to me. That's $200 a month in water and sewage. Now, remember, I bought in this thing at $25. So that means, per month, so that means that over the next 20 years, for which I am in a bond, have to be taxed, I pay $31,000 in sewage, I pay 14, almost 15,000 in water, I had to pay $9,000 to convert from a well to a sewage system, and I will be paying $55,000 in sewage and water. The infrastructure wasn't there. And yes, North Cootney Water put a moratorium on that growth, but with the provision that they are planned for expanding during the moratorium...
Jackie, I'm going to have to stop here.
Am I on three minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Over.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Oh, sorry. You can have this. Please look at the highlighted. All right.
Thank you.
B-1004?
Okay. Richard Rasmussen, opposed, may wish to speak. Okay. I'm going to be holding to the three minutes, folks. So please try to...
I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity...
You're very welcome.
...to speak. And Commissioner Brooks, I'm particularly impressed with your knowledge of Highway 97 problems. Between mile marker 92, 93 is the spot you were talking about. I have a lot of fun with that every time I pass through because my car almost rolls down to the lake. Got to really slow down, be careful. I guess I have to ask, who's responsible for Highway 97? It's a state highway. It's a scenic byway by designation. The county, I guess, has responsibility to fill the potholes, which they do from time to time. We've not had any major work done on the highway for years now. It's getting worse by the year. If there's no plan in place to fix Highway 97, which is the primary access for Gauzer and everybody else, we should see a moratorium on new expansion and new construction until such time as we have infrastructure that will support it. I have to ask, if we had a major disaster on the east side of the lake, such as a giant fire, which is not uncommon in this north part of the country, how are we supposed to get out? There's no alternative to Highway 97. There's, as you could drive up and down every day, there's 100 construction vehicles up and down, cement trucks, dump trucks, all the contractors back and forth, some of which have experienced some real problems during storms later, earlier. But we've had nothing but heavy growth on the east side of the lake, and until we get some satisfaction on the infrastructure improvement, I don't see how it's responsible to let it go any farther. So I request that we consider that at least, if not now, downstream. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
It's all these, does not indicate if they want to speak.
I'll call them out anyway. Okay. So Bill Lampard, opposed, but you've not indicated whether you wish to speak. No? Okay. Sylvia?
No.
No? Okay.
Everybody must say.
Okay. Jerry Burmes? Do you wish to speak? Opposed. Okay.
Let's be very short. I bought on the lake up there in 2004. I'm on Catamaran Drive, right by Arrow Point Resort, and the year after that, Gauzer started coming in and doing all their stuff, and our prices have went up, utilities, everything, like, it's all been said here. The other day, just the road is my biggest concern at this point. It is extremely dangerous. Last Saturday, I'm retired, so I got kind of a little mind thing that I do. I kind of count the cars as I meet them, and so I kind of know all the traffic on that road. And I'm not kidding you, last Saturday, I ran into 12 cement trucks headed up 97. And all my counts go from the fire station down to I-90, and the minimum is usually, I think the lowest count I ever had was 47, as high as 90. Now, this is in a 20-minute stretch, so you can imagine the amount of traffic that's going up and down that road. The road's full of potholes. There's been quite a few times when I've had to swerve into the barrel pit because of the construction trucks and stuff coming up, and it's extremely dangerous. The cement trucks, I had no idea. I just kept meeting them and meeting them and meeting them, and they're full. You know, they weigh 70,000 pounds, they're at the maximum. And if you watch that road over there, I don't know how many years ago there was, they kind of recapped part of it. You know, that's all full of potholes now. People are dodging the potholes. You've got cars coming up. You've got, and I have, some of my accounts that I have, when it was like 90 vehicles within this eight miles, was construction, pickups, vans, big trucks. And that's just going on up and down that road. It's extremely... It's extremely, it's dangerous. We had a wreck right above by Arrow Point Resort a couple of weeks ago when a van was coming up. And I don't know the circumstances, but they swerved off the road and they went down, clear down and hit Arrow Point Drive, which goes down to Arrow Point. And they had the road all shut off. One guy was hurt and it was a construction van. So that's my biggest concern. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think most of you all do not wish to speak.
Okay. All right then. So does anybody else wish to speak who hasn't? Name and address, please.
Joe Moncrief, 3756 East Eaglesmere Road in Harrison.
I'm sorry, last name again?
Moncrief, M-O-N-C-R-I-E-F.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's founded.
There it is. We got it. Okay.
I wasn't going to speak, but just some things. When Vlad Finkel was talking, he talked about the 28 acres is only 4%. The 662 they already have. And it just reminded me of the riddle, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And it makes me wonder if, like the hearing examiner said, it was that since these 28 acres are contiguous, they can be considered a natural inclusion to be part of Gaza? So it just begs the question, how much more of the contiguous natural inclusions does Gaza want to have? And is it going to end up when I'm maybe not so much older than I am now, I can't even go anywhere in the area where I live because it's private property owned by a group of people who are here one month out of the year? And that's my biggest concern. And so I just think just because someone can or is allowed or is legal to do something doesn't mean they should, in my opinion. And thank you for letting me talk.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Oh, we've got two more. Okay. Yes, ma'am, come forward. Name and address, please.
Eric Cunningham, 4693 Shalup Road in Coeur d'Alene. I didn't plan to speak, but I think another voice is needed. I've been here since 1971 and I've seen a wealth of changes, good and bad for Coeur d'Alene. And we vote you in to have you make good decisions, to keep Coeur d'Alene tourist and friendly to the people that live here. That's not going on now. And that worries me that we'll lose the lake, which is driven, you know, to live here. Most people need a job. And you take our tourism away, the lack of access to the water, swimming, will that happen? I mean, I'm looking down the road to the future of saving Coeur d'Alene Lake and the life that you want to live here. So I'm asking you to really take a hard look at our structures coming in, the roadway, terrible road going around 97. I know that for many years. And that's just what I want to say.
Thank you. There's someone else who wish to speak? Yeah, okay. Name and address, please.
Barbara Darrell, 7153 South Eddieville Road, which is out at Nicheon Bay, which is formerly Squaw Bay.
Go ahead.
I want to address the fact that the 40 additional spaces from the water district that they're talking about. I work for a private family up at Gaza Ranch. They have bought two extra lots adjacent to the lots where their home is, and they own those lots. They're keeping them so that they have space around them. But at some point in time, they may wish to develop those two lots. Part of those 40 allotments from the water district actually belong to them. So how many people up at Gaza Ranch own lots thinking as an investment that at some point in time, they will want to use their water allotment for those lots? So I want you to take into consideration the fact that just because there are 40 units available for water used, doesn't mean that Gaza Ranch necessarily owns those rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? No, I'm sorry. You already went, Jerry. You don't get another, you don't get another bite at the apple. Sorry. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, just come forward.
All right. So both may wish to speak.
My husband doesn't want to speak.
Okay.
But that's fine. That's fine.
That's okay. You're fine. You're Lori. Okay. Lori Lamont, go right ahead.
Lori Lamont. Okay. My thing, I'm against it, a denial. And my reasoning is, is because not only are they developing what they have, but based on the restricted residential, they're now adding all these ALUs, which range from like 1,200 square feet to 1,400 square feet. So that in essence is doubling everything they already have. And so that's going to bring in more cars, more family members and more use. And it's going to affect our traffic. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay then, so at this point, I'm going to let the applicant rebut.
Mr. Chairman.
Stephanie, would you like to come forward?
Yes, Pat.
Yeah, what's up, Pat?
You may wish to see if there's any members of the public on Zoom that would testify also.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on?
I think David's got it over here.
I'm looking right now. Looks like there's Peter Deering, D-E-E-R-I-N-G on Zoom. Peter, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
And at the moment, that's the only other person that's not staff, that's on Zoom.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Stephanie Blak for the record. I just have one thing to add. The 40 PUD dwelling units that, they will be developed with or without this PUD amendment. So those won't be taken away. However, the amendment does bring in 28 acres for more open space and takes away that ability to develop those three lots independently. That's all I have.
Okay. All right then. So is there a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations?
Yes, I'll make that motion that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
So entering into deliberations for everyone's benefit, this is a discussion amongst the three of us, which will result in a vote. We can certainly ask questions of staff, cannot ask them their opinion, but we can ask questions of a technical nature. Does anyone have any questions for staff? At this point. Go right ahead.
I think one thing that came up over and over and over again is that the county has responsibility for I-97. Could you address that?
Yes, Commissioners, the state of Idaho has responsibility for 97. That would be Idaho Department of Transportation or Transportation Department.
Potholes and everything.
Yes, for everything in the right of way. The county has no road department and no public works department.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Vlad, did you want to say something?
I want to clarify a statement that was made by the member of the public.
Sure.
They have stated that there are vacant parcels or vacant lots that have not been developed on at this time, and they're concerned whether they would have the development right. Like to clarify that the 335 units that have been exercised at this time with 40 remaining, the 335 includes developed and undeveloped lots because those lots that have been platted are afforded a development right. So I think it's maybe a bit of a misunderstanding to think that if a lot is not developed, it may not be afforded a development right. A platted lot, once it's platted, it's been determined by a department that it has reasonable utility and livability, therefore it has an outright permitted right of that underlying zone, which is a residential use in the restricted residential zone as well as the confinement of the PUD approval.
Okay, so as long as you're on that, the 335 versus the 375, okay, so we have a 40 lot spread there.
We have a 40 units, we have a 40 unit allowance that has not, that has not been exercised at this time.
That has not been exercised, but the applicant has the right to do so.
Yes. And the 335 that has, that have been exercised, that does not necessarily mean that all 335 structures have been constructed. It just implies that the lots that were plotted to facilitate for those residences have been plotted and recorded. They exist as bona fide lots with allowed uses.
And water.
Excuse me?
And water.
And water. With regard to the 40 lots, the difference between the 335 and the 375, what level of approval outside of the normal, you know, building code requirements would be required for folks to build on those 40 lots?
That's a good question. What the applicant would have to do is they would have to contact and request a review of a specific project, whether it's a minor subdivision, whether it's a major subdivision, whether it's a condominium plat, we don't know. I mean, it's something that is done incrementally. And I understand that folks don't like the word incremental because it insinuates expansion. But as long as that incremental development is within the bounds of the original approval, it's not an expansion. It's not an increase in density. It's not an increase on overall development.
Okay, so these remaining 40 lots, right or wrong, are owned by individuals?
No, sir.
Or trusts or?
No, sir.
It's land under their own.
Within a PUD, there's a given number, every time we do a PUD, a given number dwelling units.
Go right ahead.
What you've heard Vlad explain now is that there, certain number have been platted and exist today with water rights. There's 40 that have not been platted.
Okay.
Those 40 have to go through a review process of some kind, either condominium plat, a minor subdivision, a major subdivision, a combination of those.
So at a minimum, they would have to undergo your individual review?
At a minimum. And then on the other side, a public review in front of the hearing examiner and you.
Depending on?
If it's a major subdivision.
Understood. Okay.
And of course, if the, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go right ahead, Pat.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one other point is that, is that even if it were a minor subdivision or condominium plat approval that's done by the director, those are still appealable to the county commissioners as well.
That is correct.
Commissioners, please keep in mind that those lots that have been platted, that are before you on this slide, and if they're, if they're currently vacant, all the applicant or all the property owner has to do is request a building permit. With that building permit, then of course we would get the sign offs from the agencies with jurisdiction, including the water district, that then would assign.
Are you referring to the 335?
No.
Or the, or the, go right ahead.
So what I, just to clarify, any lots that are shown on the face of this slide, the 335 that are currently exercised, any of those that are currently vacant, that have not been developed.
Among the, among the 335?
Among the 335.
Okay.
They are afforded a development right based on the underlying zoning regulations and PUD approval order of decision. All they have to do is request a building permit for legally created lots.
Okay, so then the conclusion is, as far as the remaining 40 are concerned, they're going to have to go through some level of approval, whether if, whether individually by Director Callahan or the hearing examiner, or depending on the size, if it's major, the Board of County Commissioners. Fair statement?
Correct. And that would occur if this, if this proposal to expand the area were to be denied, they would have to go through that review within the existing boundaries of the PUD. And if the area were to be expanded based on this 28 acre proposal, then the review process would be on the remaining areas within the PUD and the 28 acres. It doesn't change the review process based on this decision.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Vlad anymore? Or anyone on staff? Okay. We're in deliberations, right? Okay, let's go. Bill, you want to take?
Nope.
What do you mean, no?
I mean, no, I listened and then I made a decision.
Do you want to share that?
I'd make a motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, I move that we approve PUD 21-0003 Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club Planned Unit Development.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion before we proceed to a vote?
Yeah, I don't mind discussing.
Okay, go right ahead.
So for me, this is a case of actually protecting the lake and future density because what it does is it takes these parcels and they could be right now today, if they go through the process, developed into more than 100 homes. But if it's included in the PUD, 40 homes is the max that this additional acreage can, will be allowed to sustain. So for me, going from over 100 homes to including it to the already 40 homes that are planned, then that is more of a protection and a security than allowing those two parcels to be fully developed per the zoning right now. So I think it protects the lake and I think it protects the additional traffic on the highway because we're not talking about adding more homes. We're talking about just those 40 homes that may or may not ever come to fruition, especially since out of the 335 homes, it's not actually 335 homes, like the one lady explained, one home has three parcels. So I'm comfortable with this and that's why I seconded the motion.
Okay. Bill, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. I have driven Route 97 often, not of late, but we used to own land there for, I think it was maybe 15 years. And so I'm well aware of the issues. When the Carlin Bay proposal came forward, I voted against it because I have a longstanding issue with ITD, which continues to evade the issues that are especially pertinent to Route 97. There doesn't seem to be any money, even though the state is awash in cash, to beef up the road, and I don't know if it's even feasible to do so. The traffic, I'm well aware of the situation, especially of late with all the construction vehicles. On the other hand, we do have a situation here where we're not increasing the density. And if and when it comes to the point where the director or the hearing examiner, or for that matter, if it comes to us, the Board of County Commissioners, has to rule on this, now that becomes a very separate issue. From a personal standpoint, I actually believe that there never should have been any wide scale development on Route 97. But unfortunately, prior boards have never stood up, maybe not had the foresight, maybe there just wasn't that much traffic at that time and so they were, it was permitted. With this situation before us right now, unfortunately, and I'm going to take, probably take a very different view when it comes before us for any further development, but at this time, given the fact that we're not increasing the density, even if I were to oppose it, it's obvious that I would lose the vote. So just to make a statement, makes no sense to me, so I'm going to have to go along with it anyway. So there is a first, there is a second. Let's take a roll call.
Bill Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Duncan? Aye.
Hold on, hold on. Let's make sure we've got this right.
So you, you moved that we approved the development, you moved that we approved it?
Yes.
Yes.
And I voted against it.
Okay.
Whoa, 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 I'm confused. So you're voting against?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
Don't follow.
Did I, was I alone in misunderstanding?
I just wanted to get it on the table so we could have a vote, have some. I vote no.
Commissioner Duncan? Aye.
Wow, I get to swing again, huh?
Philios?
This is tough. I don't know if it does more harm to vote no than yes. I think Leslie made a legitimate argument. I'm going to vote no.
So, well, doesn't matter.
No, go right ahead.
Now you have opened up those 28 acres to over 100 homes potentially coming forth. So that's, instead of keeping it, securing it, protecting the lake, protecting the highway, So that's, instead of keeping it, securing it, protecting the lake, protecting the highway, you've now allowed them to open it up. Because they, they own it. They've owned it for 15 years. So they can just go ahead and, and develop it from there.
But they still have to go through the formal approval process.
Mm-hmm. But they do with the 40 homes as well. But at least it would only be 40 homes instead of over 100 homes. So I mean, we're going to lose.
No, sir. He's made a decision. It's a board's prerogative. I don't wish to interject my thoughts.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead, Pat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go.
If you want to, there is a way, you know, since you, you, since you're on the prevailing side, you could move to have a re, you know, have a reconsideration of the vote, you know, reconsideration of the matter for, for another vote. If that's your prerogative. Or, you know, certainly the applicant would have the prerogative to move for reconsideration as well, and then you can, you know, make a decision at that time.
All right, so what, so what happens in a reconsideration, Pat? Do we have to go through the hearing process all over again?
No, I would just move to reconsider the vote.
And then if that gets a second and at least two votes, then you can reconsider your vote.
Pat, does that, does that need to be done by Mr. Commissioner Brooks since he made the motion?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Thank you.
And when would this happen?
Right now.
Well, right now. It's just reconsidering your vote. It's not a formal request for reconsideration. That's a different process.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay.
So the motion, motion's been made. Is there a second?
For reconsideration?
Of the vote.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so as long as we're going to reconsider?
Well, let, let her take the roll call. Bill Brooks?
Clark, take the roll.
No.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Okay, so we're going to reconsider the vote, which means we can, I presume, can resume our deliberations.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Let's go make the arguments.
Okay. So, once again, you're talking about this area that is going to expand geographically but not expand in density. So you're not going to have any more people coming into the area except for what has been approved, and right now, 40 are unaccounted for. So if you do not include those, that 28 acres, then they have a right to come forward with over 100 homes in those two, in the east side and the west side, equally in the 28 acres.
And in addition to the 40?
In addition to the 40. So including these acres in that PUD, that's 40. They have lost those 100 homes. They just get the 40, and that's it. So it's actually protecting.
David, is that factually correct?
Yes, that's factually true.
Any thoughts?
No, I, I oppose this.
Okay.
Period. I mean, that's.
You're firm. Okay.
Absolutely. Rock solid firm.
Pat, you want to weigh in again?
I was just going to point out, you know, essentially, you know, it would, and I think the point's been made, but I just wanted to reiterate it. Including the property in the PUD would reduce their development rights on that property from what, what they would be allowed to do in the restricted residential zone to what they're allowed to do in the PUD.
Yes, thank you, Pat. I didn't use those exact words. But yes, it will reduce the development avail, the ability. So this really is a protection. It is not an increase.
Okay then. New vote?
I move that we approve PUD 21-0003, which is the Gaza Ranch Golf and Lake Club Planned Unit Development.
Is there a second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Bill Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the reason I voted aye is because it's going to be the lesser of potentially to may perhaps what most folks might consider undesirable, and I understand that. But unfortunately, this is what we're left with because, going back to what I said earlier, we never should have allowed wide-scale development on Route 97. It is what it is at this point, unfortunately. Anyway.
And that's, may I say?
Go right ahead.
That's why we do this, if we're just a matter of checking the boxes. That's one thing. But we sit and, and try to make judgments. And sometimes judgments are right and sometimes they're wrong. But that was my judgment.
Okay, so the time is now 10:38. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.